I would like to welcome you all to our Thursday, September 30th, 2021, a meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. This is a continuation of a public meeting for asphalt engineering. The applicant and owner of Farm Street Property Management, L S L L C, proposes to amend the previously issued development plan decision and special permit decision dated May 25th, 2017, to expand the crushing of asphalt operations at 190 Farm Street in Bellingham, approximately 15 plus than highest acres of land, shown on the assessors map, oh seven dash fourteen, Zone Industrial. At our meeting, two weeks, a recent meeting, we provided a list of determinations to the applicant, and they've updated and provided to the applicant this morning. Jim, can I like turn the meeting over to you and give us an overview of what we'd like to do this evening?
Hi guys, good evening. So, based on our last meeting, the board was looking at a number of findings and conditions that they really wanted to put down on paper, or the board wanted to put down on paper. So, I, I attempted at a first draft of what that might look like. You have that in your package this evening. I know the applicant also has, has that to be reviewed. And this evening, I think, if you'd like, we can go down the findings and conditions. But I think everyone has somewhat of a good understanding of each of those. And, you know, I think maybe if the applicant would like to discuss any, any of those that might be of concern to them. And then perhaps we could have a conversation on those. I think, you know, over the past several months, we've had a really good conversation. I think at that last meeting, we were coming to terms on almost everything. And so I'm sure there's a couple of items that the applicant may wish to speak to. And then we can have a conversation from there.
If the board would like to go in that order, I would be happy to start talking, but I don't want to go out of turn.
No, go ahead. The floor is yours, sir. Are your applicants?
They are actually on, I believe that Aaron and Nate are the phone number dialed in because as the way Murphy's Law in the modern world works, Safari decided to update as soon as they tried to launch the Zoom hearing. So that they are here by phone, and once we can see their smiling faces, I'm sure they'll log in that way as well. But we are, we are prepared to move forward and they are. Aaron, can you hear everything all right?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much for all being here. We truly appreciate it. And I'm, I am working on trying to get this launched so we can see everybody. Yeah.
So, again, a thank you to Mr. Cupford for putting this together. I know he's working in multiple locations at the moment. So we certainly appreciate his continued support of this project because it looks like, looking at the original documents, I think our original application got in in April. So we've all been at this for a while, and I'm hoping we can wrap it up before any other staff decides to flee the ship. With regard to the determinations, I think one thing, and really the only thing about the determinations I see that we have questions about is we still have that 16 trucks number listed in determination number five. I know that we discussed previously that we don't have a traffic study and aren't really sure, but that that probably isn't an accurate number. And as is often the case in these things, it may come up later on down the line. We don't want to be seen as having represented that number and having a future board look at it and say, well, you said 16, so.
Can I address that?
Of course.
I think that came about based on information you provided to us, or your applicant provided to us. And I believe, going back to July and possibly September, when you mentioned that the difference between the incoming and the outgoing, without the sales and additional material coming in, that was not yours, would make it the trucking, in essence, almost neutral? And that's why we did not leave it at 12, and the event, it wasn't neutral, we increased it by 30%. That was generated based on information you provided to us indicating it would be neutral. We didn't leave it at neutral, we increased. And I also, so that's where the genesis of the 16 days.
Okay. So then I think if we want to get into the conditions as have been drafted up by Jim here, I think there's a few little pieces of wordsmithing. And then as we get to number six, that'll probably warrant further discussion. But if I want to start with the smaller items, in number one, I don't know if it should be represented that the 20 days is part of the bulk storage permit, not the development plan permit. And then, again, I have from a lawyerly and former planning board member's standpoint, I'm wondering if this is overly specific to tie up a future board where you certainly have the choice at this meeting or in the future to determine what would be considered major or not. So I'm not sure if it's necessarily germane to have that checkpoint there.
I think that was, as a result again, of our discussions. And we indicated to you in our last meeting that we went to great lengths to make sure that this was considered, in this instance, a minor change as opposed to a major change. And we articulated that in the future, any additional request like this would most likely be viewed as a major change. Someone in the board can correct me if I'm wrong. But again, that's where the genesis of that came from.
Yeah, and I, I agree with all of that as you just outlined it. But the way you just phrased it, that a future board could determine, makes it sound more like a determination than a condition from where I'm standing. And again, I don't know that this is necessarily the spot that we need to go around and around after several meetings. The board has spent a lot of time on this. I just wanted to note.
Okay, but I, again, I feel comfortable with that language.
Yeah, I think it, it all stems around the word shall, whether it shall should be made. I think what, so lawyers are paranoid by profession, so I think what Elon is thinking about, so if they want to come back and fix it by five days, or one day, or seven, or 115, is there a distinction? Or are we, are we saying definitively now, any change in the number of residents shall constitute a change?
I think that distinction is exactly what I'm, I guess, poorly trying to articulate. It's that may versus shall situation where I think future boards should be left certain discretion while understanding clearly what the viewpoint of this board today is.
So I, you know.
It might be premature.
No, I won't leave that language in the subject grade.
Okay.
We can look at the word shall.
All right, if we want to, if the board doesn't mind, we could table that and I'll just keep going. If you're all, so then in number three, it's written, no sales of the reprocessed asphalt pavement shall be permitted. We've talked about the wordsmithing aspect of this. I would propose no outside and then parenthetical applicant and/or 190 Farm Street tenant only, close parenthesis, sales of the reprocessed asphalt pavement shall be permitted. Just again, because we need to be careful to make sure that, again, this is a taxed sale between asphalt engine, or to asphalt engineering. And we've discussed that at some length. I think it's just a cleaning up the language verbiage there. Number.
No outside sales?
Yeah, I think you mentioned to include the word outside in front of sales.
Yep.
So no outside sales.
Only sales permitted would be between the two entities?
Yeah, so in one of the other pieces of these declarations, there was a I of course won't be able to find it now, but there was a way where it was listed as applicant and/or 190 Farm Streets tenant only, or if you wanted to list that as asphalt engineering, or however, we had said related entity in these previous discussions. I just think that could be tightened slightly.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't like the word tenant either, Eli. So we can, we can use the specific names of the entities themselves.
Okay. Number five, in the, I think, last sentence here, I think it, it makes more sense, and I understand, and I'm not proposing that this be used as a snow farm, because that was clearly what you said, it will not be used at. So I would have no trucking of snow from on off-site locations for storage as opposed to and storage onsite shall be permitted. Because at certain locations, we do truck to other parts of their site. So it doesn't change the board's intention here, I don't think. It just tightens up the language that if snow ends up in a truck, we're not in violation of this permit. And then, snow plowing and removal operations shall not be required to adhere to the hours of operation outlined in previous permits. Because as written right now, they could only operate outside of the permitted hours for the Farm Street location. And that's another persnickety shall if we don't modify it.
I would, so offsite locations for storage, and then I would also just add board disposal onsite shall be permitted.
No, I don't want offsite disposal to be permitted.
Oh, shall, shall be, well, it's a negative, no trucking of snow. You know what I mean? So no trucking of snow from offsite locations for storage or disposal onsite shall be permitted.
I think we'd be fine with that, that the way you just phrased it, because we understand, I think we're all in agreement on the principle that it's not to be used as a snow farm.
Yeah.
And the last sentence, what, what are you looking for?
Snow plowing and removal operations shall not be required to adhere to the hours of operation outlined in previous permits. Because if it's shall not.
Conceivably, you could be doing 24 hours.
I suppose, but as it's written right now, we would have to stop at 6:00 AM, from dusk to 6:00 AM would be the only time we'd be allowed to do it.
No, I just said here, snow plowing operations shall not adhere to the hours of operations outlined in previous permits. What I'm saying is you can plow all you want beyond those hours.
Okay, I think I'm wordsmithing here, maybe unnecessarily.
I feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm simply saying, look, those hours do not apply to snow plowing. We realize you may be plowing conceivably around the clock.
Okay.
And that's part of your business, and we don't want to impede on that.
Understood. So then, I think number six is where the bulk of our discussion tonight will be. I have one other comment later, and then we can come back, because I think that makes more sense, is that.
Let's get the other comment, when I spend a lot of time discussing number six.
Pardon?
Last comment.
Yeah, the last comment for number nine is I think that paragraph should probably start with something like, to the extent consistent with and not superseded by this decision, all conditions set forth, and then continue as written. Because obviously, certain things, the 20-day permit, would, we would, if we were to be granted this, wouldn't comply with the six, you know, it just needs to be modified by the fact that the decision may be modified.
Did you say that one more time, Eli?
Yeah, so Jim, I wrote, to the extent consistent with and not superseded by this decision, all, and then I deleted determinations, decisions, and, so I have all conditions set forth. Because obviously, compliance with previous determinations isn't really a requirement of an amended permit that has its own determinations.
Jim, what's your feeling?
And I, I think that's, that's accurate. I think those ones that the board has agreed upon with Eli, Eli can certainly send them my way, and I'll be happy to incorporate those into any decision. That one just simply, you know, that's our standard language for, if you have multiple permits, they all kind of work together. What Eli is adding on there is simply that, you know, some of these conditions will essentially override some previous decisions, so that, such as expanded crushing days perhaps, or, or modifying the findings of truck numbers, that's all. So I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so then number six obviously comes about from the discussion of stormwater management and the water safety as relates to the zone two public water supply protection zone and the interplay of your local bylaws with the state regulations. If we could have a brief aside, I wonder if Mr. Divine found the information he was looking for in the document we supplied relating to the RCC permit application. And I guess about 144-page packet of supporting documents, plans, and the opinion from Sage Engineering with regard to the level of consideration paid to the local wetlands and watershed, excuse me, watershed protection concerns.
So, so first off, I think the, the larger document made it in after the deadline, which was Friday. Okay, so I don't think the rest of the board has seen that document at this point. I think I was copied on it when I went back to the office, but it didn't go back past that. I will, however, say to your point that the information did provide does go to the question that I had, was that did DP, DP, DPC that was in Zone Two area, and I think what you provided to the entire board does say that, that the the information that you provided basically says that the, that was the application of DPP, right? Eli?
Right.
You provided an email, and the rest of the board saw, was only the two-page document, but that's what you're after, right?
Right.
So what you're really after is saying, you know, basically, did that document say that the application had Zone Two referenced in the application? Is that, is that what your point was? And I'm going to say, yes, it did. Is there another point that you wanted to make?
Well, we, it was a certain sticking point for you in terms of this permitting process and not to single you out, other members of the board as well. You had asked for specific documentation.
Specifically, one of my concerns was the fact that I was concerned that, that DEP didn't, didn't understand that this was in Zone Two. So the document that you provided did go to that point, and the document, which was the application, is what you're confirming in this meeting right now, correct? Which you provided, which the, the two-page screenshot, right, was part of the document that went to DEP as the application. And yes, when I read that, that goes to the point that, that yes, that is basically saying that, you know, they consider Zone Two in that decision.
Okay.
That, that was your point, right, sir? That's what you're asking, right?
That is my, I suppose, point, but really, I want to be assured to some degree that you were comfortable with what was provided in terms of the applicant trying to be responsive to your question as raised at the previous meeting. Not necessarily trying to prove a point other than to get the documents in front of the board for review because they were requested.
So I asked for a document, you provided it, and it provided information. And I think that information is what goes towards the question I had at the time.
Great.
Creates you comfortable. Getting that document, when my concern was the fact that DEP did not consider the fact this was in a zone two. Doesn't affect anything else, but yeah, it says it right on the application that is on, that's in Zone Two. I mean, it doesn't talk, it doesn't talk about, you know, you know, it's as was the application, you know, 20 days and stuff like that, you know, absolutely.
Okay.
That's what we saw, the rest of the board did not see the rest of that document because it came in after Friday. But I think that's to your entire point, was those two pages, right?
Yeah, and I think you requested the full document, so I provided it. I didn't want to inundate the board and the public record with a 144-page document that was already of the public record. So if I mishandled providing that, I certainly apologize.
So, so, so the board, I mean, my, so that came in after the deadline, and the only reason why I saw it was because I was CC'd on. And I don't think it's being considered tonight because of the fact it came in after the deadline on Friday. However, if, I don't think, I think it's immaterial at this point, because if your point is, did I, did we, did we receive a document that goes to the fact that that DEP went to Zone Two? I think you're, either way, that's, that's what we just talked about, right? Is there more to the document that you wanted the board to see? Because we can ask for a continuance till next time, do it that way.
I don't think we need to ask for a continuance, and I would. I understand that the board has their document submittal procedures. I'm, I'm trying to reply tonight based on a document I received at nine this morning. I think we're all trying to do our best here. So if I, I guess I don't understand what's necessarily happening right here, because did the board receive what they asked for, or have we somehow been deficient?
I just wanted to check for a minute. Jim, the reason that document was provided this morning is that it was requested by the applicant, correct?
Yeah, but I've been in contact, again, I understand the staffing change here, but things have been a little bit roiled by the fact that my point of contact for your board was, has taken a new position. And again, I appreciate him being here today. I think I would hope there could be some degree of flexibility in light of the circumstances. I don't know why this is a sticking point at the moment, frankly.
Neither do I, because I don't think it's material at this point. I think your point that you came to was made by that document.
Great.
Right? Is there another point that you're trying to make on this?
No.
Okay, then I, I think we can, unless you're asking for a continuance for the rest of the board to review it, I think, we, you know, I think you said no to that. I would say in the future, though, that we need to adhere to timelines on things in case of other, other cases, because.
Noted.
What else you have in regards to item number six?
So, to not put too fine a point on it, this proposed testing regime just does not work for the applicant. There's, as we discussed a bit last week, and have now reviewed today, and I've reviewed the regulations, I've spoken with environmental scientists about this. There's a lack of clarity about the testing protocol, and that creates an enormous financial risk for the applicant. And previous permits required review of MEPA, NIPD's, the Zone Two protection area, and none of them imposed this type of testing. And then additionally, it was brought to our attention that this type of analytical testing involves the risk of required reporting under 310 CMR 40, which is the Massachusetts contingency plan, which is basically Massachusetts version of CircLa Superfund, where there's, if anything is found, regardless of what happened, how it got there, if it had anything to do with the applicant, we're in a full mitigation. And throughout all of the permitting over the last four years, none of this type of testing that's now being proposed has been required at the state level. Or really for other projects in Bellingham, from many of the records I've reviewed. So I'm trying to protect my client's interest here in that the risk of changing from a full unvetted permitting procedure and regime, well, again, the state and DEP is well situated and has vetted and determined when these testing requirements should come into play for 40 additional days of testing to bring in something that we have no idea what the financial burden, what the logistical burden, what, what happens, what the mechanism for enforcement, what any of these things are, it would be malpractice for me to allow and to counsel my client. They certainly can do whatever they want, but to allow and counsel them to take this type of condition as writ. It just, it seems unnecessary in light of how regulated all aspects of this industry are and how the Commonwealth has chosen to do testing and the various permits and various applications that are required and the scrutiny that comes there with.
My understanding was, at one point during our meeting, our last meeting, you felt comfortable with baseline water testing. And then we're going to try to have a peer review done to determine the requirements. This entire board was not present in 2017. I believe members of this board are very concerned about the impact that RAP, which you'll agree, based on material safety data sheet, is a carcinogen. You know, this is our aquifer. I think I said the last meeting, you know, we don't want to be 20 years down the road, have made a mistake, and finding out that something in the RAP polluted our water. Also, to make you aware, in a subsequent meeting, an application, the app therefore is a very large concern for another application of Bellingham residents. Things have changed since 2017. People are very concerned about the aquifer. We would not be doing what we're elected to do if we didn't look out for the aquifer. This is our source of water. You know, once it's polluted, it's very, you know, it's hard to, I don't know, horrible saying, but you put that genie back in the bottle. If we're doing baseline water testing, it gives us the opportunity to find out if there is something wrong with our water. It's certainly not to pinpoint blame. You know, we've gone through these steps, and we've changed the language in some of the determinations and some of the conditions, and it comes down to the crux of everything this evening is on water testing. I'm hoping there is a happy medium between both parties. And I'm wondering if you could suggest what that happy medium could be.
So if the point of water testing wouldn't be to assign blame, has this type of testing happened at your wellheads and the various other town locales, upstream, downstream, et cetera, from this site?
I'm not a member of the Board of Health, so I do not know those particulars. And I've been resistant to do this, but to me, it's pretty personal, okay? I'm fortunate that I spent my summers growing up in the Cape, in the town of Born. We have Otis Air Force Base in our property. And water testing for years has become a huge concern. Town of Born implemented water testing on the aquifer in the offshoots of runoff from Otis Air Force Base to address the concerns of the residents. And the residents provided those results periodically. That's why it's a concern. Myself, my family, my nieces, my nephews, my siblings, grandchildren, spent summers there. And so that, that's why it's a concern. Water is critical. So I think we can find, hopefully. You know, water is critical, so I, I think we can find hopefully a happy meeting. Do you find anything in the language that would be acceptable to your client?
Again, as, as we discussed, and as your, um, one of your board members suggested, there are. DEP and state level testing regimes for all of this. I just don't know. I, I know that I'm certainly not qualified to write this type of review, and I. Again, I spoke to Sage for a little bit this morning to see what they could come up with, and they said we have. Five hours, nothing that we would feel comfortable coming up with and presenting for public consumption at this point. We unfortunately are just not in a place where local level testing is something. That makes sense for the applicant.
And you know, again, since we're um. Talk about this, uh, you made a statement at the beginning of the last meeting, where you indicated that um. We exchanged the goalposts. I don't think we changed the goalposts. We've been talking about the importance of water and the aquifer from the beginning. And Dennis, you heard a comment in July, correct?
Yeah, at one point, uh, I believe your client stated that you could actually drink this stuff. So I don't see why you worried about contamination if that be the case.
Again. This is a, a discussion, not to betray confidences, but that we talked about quite a bit today, because. I fully realize that nothing we say questioning a regime at the local level, because fundamentally, we think it's. Unfair and a little bit um, outside of the jurisdiction and not vetted, as I discussed. I realized that everything I say to that effect makes us sound guilty, while we fully believe and are confident. In the state level research that the product we're, we're providing is not listed as a hazardous material, it was properly permitted in the location, and water testing was not required at that point. So I'm, it's a sticky wicket from my spot where I realize what it sounds like, but I'm concerned about the procedure, not what's on the ground there.
Okay. Then what, what, so did you have any other ulterior alternate language?
Again, I think if there was some way we could defer to Commonwealth level testing on that, we could be comfortable. I just. I fundamentally don't think it's a Bellingham planning board spot with as much respect as I have for this board. You do an incredible job. You thoroughly vet every project, and it is clear every meeting I've been in front of you, how much you care about the town and residents of Bellingham. And now I'm been made clear about how important the aquifer is. I think there are ways to ensure this, but. There's a reason that certain things are qualified as hazardous by the state, certain things are allowed in these various zones. And to the, to the document that we provided previously, uh, at least some of it in time. It goes to show that these things were considered, at least in far as the uh, zone two, and then the other parts. MIPA and not triggering NPTIs, et cetera, and that the stormwater system and site plan was built. For exactly what we're asking to do, the pile sizes don't change, more equipment doesn't come in, the site was built for what we're proposing. So if the Commonwealth decides that we have triggered one of these things, we will comply absolutely in every way. But right now, we are creating a new local permitting regime for something that I'm not sure has legislative backing.
Okay, um. I hear you. Um, I just want to go back to um. Two thousand seventeen. Conservation Commission, if I recall. I mean, I, I have a hard time remembering what I did on Monday, but I recall you had some minutes at one point. Um, Conservation Commission, I believe voted uh, four to one. For approval. The person who did not vote going back to two thousand seventeen raised a concern about water testing. So, you know, it has been a concern of the town going back from the beginning. You know, you know, just not us. One person back then had a concern. Obviously, it was a four to one vote, and you received your permit. What I'd like to propose is finding some language based on your input. That um, we can feel comfortable with. Jim, are you, can you just follow me for a minute? What I'd like to suggest is um. Part of the issuance of a new recycling, um, composting or conversion RCC operation permit. Prior to the modification renewal of an RCC operational permit. The applicant shall conduct baseline water testing. As required by DEP stormwater runoff from the asphalt piles. Prior to runoff filtration to the water quality structure. And it continues there on you.
Are we waiting for me to respond?
Yes.
So how would that then be triggered?
If it's required by DEP, something you.
May I recommend, so I think, uh, so if it's required by DEP, which sounds like a. You know, something that both parties have been talking about for some time now, and I believe it could be triggered uh, through the fact that this permit. This decision will go toward in your application for a renewal, right? So they'll see it. And they'll see that condition, and if DEP truly does think it's necessary, then so it'll be, that's that, that would be the case.
If they don't think it's necessary, so be it.
We could absolutely live with that, and again, I, I'm not trying to.
Again, I just throw it out there, you know, the board will have to discuss it.
Yeah. But from the applicant's standpoint, we could live with that, again, because those are established testing regimes that have. Have teeth and have procedures and have protocols and have all of these things as we chase it down the line. The applicant can be comfortable, they know what to do, and that we're not. Trying to find this without any guidance from that state level.
Liz. You're on mute.
Yes.
Did you raise your hand?
Did you raise your hand?
No, I don't think so. Sorry. Sorry, I was, no, no, sorry, I was late to log in. You know, sorry.
That wasn't the matter. How does the board feel about a change in that language?
So baseline water testing based upon. DEP recommendations, and then I kept the rest of it prior. Prior to the modification renewal of the RCC operation permit?
And I think we reported in there, the applicant shall conduct a baseline water sampling. As recommended or required, what do you?
As rec- as base, as recommend, or based on DEP recommendations.
Okay.
It's gotta be on DEP recommendations, because I know even the way this is written, baseline sampling, we don't know what.
And we, we're gonna get there.
Yeah.
Without this language, we would probably have both uh, parties determine, you know, have experts.
Yeah.
And had somewhat period what the language would be.
Well, so the thing is with like the baseline sampling. First of all, you need to figure out what you're sampling for, which is DEP is going to be the one, and EPA potentially, that's that NPTIs permit. Which might be triggered, I don't know, but there's that, and then you also need to figure out where you're sampling, and I know typically, I've never seen. Sampling from a pile to a. Where the treatment system is usually, it's where the water is leaving the site.
Correct, that, and that's what we would probably.
So, yeah, so wouldn't, it might be after the treatment, it might be before, it, it all depends.
Probably after the treat.
Ti- yeah, typically, because usually you're not discharging stuff directly off-site without treatment, so.
So either you get that language again.
So baseline water testing based upon DEP recommendations. Prior to the modification or renewal of the RCCP operation permit. Is that what, that what we're agreeing to? Jim?
Uh, I would propose adding if required based on DEP recommendations.
Right.
So, I think, before we get too long for the words. I think what we're really saying is. We're kind of restating, you know, because they are already subject to whatever DEP says through the permitting process, they have to do it, right? So this is, we're just reiterating what they are already required to. So I don't think we need to really determine baselines and everything.
I, I don't, we don't, we're not. Determining what the baselines are.
Right.
We're simply saying, um, as recommended by DEP.
I'm suggesting given the word baseline testing then.
I would suggest.
There's water testing, water tasting based upon DEP recommendations.
I would suggest that even if we had no paragraph six in there, they would still have to do what they have to do. But this is, I, if, if we want to say it's contingent on them receiving their permit from wherever the permitting bodies are. That, I think that is a much more concise way of saying, you gotta do what you gotta do with the state. Because otherwise, you have to go down this rabbit hole of, which to Eli's point is where I think the trouble is, is there's just too much. Ambiguity in this.
I, I, I want something you do to address this. I want to leave paragraph six in there, and I'll leave it up to um. The recommendation of DEP.
Yeah, so what I would suggest is that we could put a condition in for six that says. This permit is subject to the applicant completing all appropriate testing and.
Now, I, I want to leave this language in there and simply add, uh, as, as recommended by DEP.
So. I think that, I, I know where you're, I think that's. I know where you're going, and I, and I think that's a valid point. But I'm, I'm concerned about the language, just from the language. I think everybody has the same goal. But the language is the, the tricky part. So. It would have to be revised more than just adding. Subject to the recommendations of DEP.
From Brian, we spent uh, six months. I don't see what, you know, what, what, he, he accepted that language.
What?
And now they're looking at the water's big one. He, he said he can live with that language.
Okay, and that's the applicant can live with it, fine.
Hmm, no.
It's, we.
I don't think we said we. Language. I think we can live with what Jim proposed. Jim had proposed the language that made a lot of sense.
So, if I, if I may, so uh, yeah, tweaking that language, I think I understand what the chairman is saying in terms of. Keeping the, 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 the gist of that condition and, and much of the detail in there, because that's something that's important to several of the board members that. DEP recognizes, um, you know, uh, that there, there has been discussion of concerns of water quality. So keeping some of that detail in there while also essentially stating that, you know, uh, testing would only be done if. DEP requires it and it'll go through the typical DEP process, so. I, I think if that's correct, I'm happy to go back and, and, and rework that language. And I know Eli has some other language that the two of us could, uh, you know, sift through these conditions and rework something. Obviously, tonight, you're just looking over draft findings and conditions, so if the board is comfortable with that framework. What we could do here is, oh, if you're comfortable with that framework and you've essentially exhausted your view, there's nothing further that you're looking for from the applicant. You could close the hearing, close it from, from public comment, and then direct myself to, to start refining this into an actual decision. That kind, that uh, uses the framework of what you've talked about tonight.
I guess what I'm left can wondering. So is this board requiring water testing is the question? If it's required by DEP, if it's required by DEP, recommended, if it's recommend, if it's recommended by. Yes, we're part of the one, right, if it's recommended by DEP, okay. It's recommended by, if it's recommended. That's, I can live with it. And we, you know, you know, Jim will work something better than I.
And obviously, we're referring to if it's recommended as in like if it's within our permit, right, just to be. Only because I noticed we're repeating that word, so I just want to make sure I understand that ultimately, our final permit through the reapplication. Has what it's requiring, so in that section, if it's requiring the testing, then we would then do the testing.
Correct. Not only now, but let's assume down the road, it changes. And um. From my own viewpoint, the reason for the base baseline, although you think I wanted to find liability. I, I really didn't. I just wanted to find out if something is wrong with the water. Let's find out what the problem is, what the source is, and how do we correct? Once our water is contaminated, we can't go back, and as I said earlier, put that genie back in the bottle. And that's my concern. Um, Liz, are you, you feel comfortable with um, what's been proposed by um. Eli and Jim?
Yes, I think that it makes sense to rely on DEP to make the decisions about what is tested and. How the water is tested and what the baseline is. I don't think we as a board have. The capacity or the know-how to implement that kind of program.
Dennis.
I agree with Liz.
You agree with me?
Not that, no way, that will, I agree with that, but. Who said it correctly?
Wrong.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, maybe one thing, just recommendation, you know, with. If. It is, if. Um, stormwater sampling is required by DEP, maybe make it a condition that, you know, our file will get results, because I don't think planning board. Does get the results. I think it usually goes to Conservation Commission if any of the boards.
Okay.
So just maybe.
That's fine.
Just to put in the file. But yes, I agree, DEP is definitely the.
Eli, are anything else?
I, I don't want to come across as greedy here. Uh, you had previously discussed potentially three or four days of night work, which are not in these conditions and.
Good point, thank you. I expect three or four days enough, because you said you don't do it often.
No, we don't do it often, because it's.
That's why I gave the three or four days.
We would, uh, again, thank you for that generosity and graciously accept that.
Because you just let the um.
Future, Jim?
I guess planning board know, so we can notify any of butters.
Absolutely.
Again, I, I don't think it's a big concern, because, you know, obviously the butters will um. Get used to you driving during the winter, during the summer. So I think that's something um. We can work with, but again, I just did not want it to fall on deaf ears, because it was something we noticed. We brought to your attention, and we want you to be, be able to, you know, conduct some operations at night.
Again, we thank you for that consideration.
Jim, do you recall that original language?
Uh, you're, you're referring to the night, the night hours?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I have some language I can, I can certainly incorporate into it, not a problem.
Anything else? Anything else? I would entertain a motion.
I would, I would recommend first closing the hearing. Um and then you can entertain a motion potentially to if the board is is interested in. Drafting a favorable decision for consideration at your next meeting.
Do I have a second? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
I'll move to draft favorable decision subject to.
To have Jim direct.
Yeah, have Jim do that.
I'll second.
Motion to the floor to draft a favorable decision based on the changes that were lifted tonight by both the applicant and the board. Um we'll have a opportunity to review that. The other discussion before I call for the vote. All in favor? Please signify by saying. I'm sorry?
Maybe we do a roll call vote since Liz is participating by Zoom.
Correct, thank you. I did a roll call vote. Liz, it's you're on Zoom. I'll ask you first.
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
So that'll be considered at next meeting, the language for a vote?
And you'll get a copy. Once it's been drafted by Jim.
And Jim, did you want my notes from?
Yeah, let's let's talk, um yeah, tomorrow or Monday and uh and compare notes.
Very good. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate you scheduling a special meeting for this. Thank you.
Do we need to continue to?
Yes, yes.
We need a motion, camera show, we're to um. Our meeting in um.
It's after the fourteenth.
October fourteenth. Have a second? Draft a call, make a roll call for that. Liz?
Aye.
You can vote.
Really?
Absolutely. Aye, aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We will see you quietly on the fourteenth, now that this is closed public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
A motion to adjourn. Third second.
Third second.
Again, after the roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Aye. We're we're adjourned.
Thank you.